Well, good evening. I almost said good afternoon as I sit here in my study and and look out the window. It with this time change, it looks like it did not long ago in the afternoon. I'm enjoying I'm enjoying this this beautiful weather that we're having lately. Today was a little cooler and the wind was blowing. I went out to put our flag out this morning and my goodness, it's been flapping all day long, but it's it's good to see this beautiful weather. Seems like the days kind of start out cool and then warm up. It's that time of the year. This past Sunday was the first day of the first day of spring. I see Sue Dotson on and a number of people are joining us. It's good to good to see you all coming on to tonight. I always like to give a look, a couple of kind of commercials for Christ Church, things that are going on, events that are coming up. And one of those is Community Cafe. I see Carol on tonight. She and Greg came through, or at least she came through and got Greg's dinner for him last night. And several of you did. We served at last count, four hundred and fourteen persons last night. The if we got really, really busy, the menu item was lasagna and vegetables and those things that go along with it. And that's a popular item on the on the menu. We we also had pizza for kids and we didn't give out all our pizza because a lot of kids took the lasagna. And we literally ran out of dessert and salads. So the last few people who came through didn't 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 get dessert, but it was a great night and the kitchen staff literally had trouble keeping up, but they did ton of work and and it was good, four hundred and fourteen plates of food. Becky's not going to be able to read for me tonight. And I hate that. I love having her here with me reading, but she has been hoping to get a district trustees meeting set up for a long time. There's an idea about something to do for homeless persons here in Chattanooga. And and that's what that meeting is about. She and I talked as she headed down to the district office just a little while ago. And they're hopeful to be able to do some things with some property that we have that might help hopeless person, homeless persons, not hopeless, but homeless persons. Some of you have probably heard that Becky has been diagnosed with a very aggressive breast cancer. And we have a plan together and and she'll start her chemotherapy on this coming Monday. So we would definitely appreciate your prayers for her and during this time of being in chemotherapy. Becky being like she is, she wants to be just things to be just as normal for her as possible. And so that's what please pray for and the effectiveness of that of that treatment. It's it's going to be six treatments spread out over a period of eighteen weeks. Another prayer request I'll lift up. Nikki Lockaby is almost always on this study along with her mother. And her mother had a really bad stroke a couple of days ago and and this afternoon, they were they were not sure if they were gonna keep her on life support or not. So be sure and be in in prayer for Nikki and her entire family. Tough time for them. And thank you, Tommy and and others for your for your your commitment to prayers. Well, let's get into our study tonight and we will we'll do chapter thirteen and chapter fourteen tonight. They work well together. Next week we'll do fifteen and sixteen as Jesus is getting closer and closer to Jerusalem on this, as we call it, journey to Jerusalem in this this season of Lent. Lent started with Ash Wednesday and it's going to go right up to Holy Week. In chapter twelve, one of the things that we studied about last week was the story of the rich fool. That's kind of the way the editor of the Bible labels that of wealthy man who had an especially good year. His crops were so good that he didn't have room in his barns to store the grain. If you grew up on a farm, you probably remember how you'd have different things you put in a barn. We had tobacco, a tobacco barn. We hung things in. We had a wheat house that we stored the wheat grain in. I never remember a year where we had so much that we we couldn't get it all fit into the barns. But if you had a really, really good year and this is what that happened here, this farmer fill up his barns. You know, you can just imagine the corn crib and the everything's full to the max. And so what does he decide to do? What was his idea of a solution? It's like I've got more I've got more barley and wheat and corn and all the stuff that he had grown than I can store. So I need to do something about that. I've got a problem. You and I might think, well, my goodness, what a good time to I have a neighbor down the road who didn't have a good year. Maybe I could share some of my grain with him. He's got empty barns. Okay, yes, Carol, he says, I'll just build another barn. I'll make larger barns so I can store that grain up. Do you remember what his goal was? I mean, obviously, he's he's thinking only of himself. But what's his goal? If I if I build a larger barn and I store this up, then I can have something that I'm that I really want. This will be really nice. This hits me just a little bit when I think about retirement funds and saving up, saving up, always wanting a larger IRA or 401K or whatever. It's it's okay to save, but we have to be careful about the attitude. This man's attitude, his real goal in life was I can save up enough that eventually I don't have to work. I can just eat, drink, he says, and be merry. Take life easy. Thank you. Eat, drink, and be merry. Exactly. That should not be our goal in life. Yes, it's good to have plenty. But remember what I said last week? John Wesley always said, earn all you can. It's no, it's not bad that this man had this awesome harvest. But number two, save all you can. And number three, give away all you can. So whenever we have a bountiful harvest, when things go well for us, we'll be looking for ways to share that with others. In Luke twelve, Jesus emphasized that we are not so we are are not to worry. And what does he use to illustrate that we should not worry about things? Remember? Jesus said, don't worry. And then he uses a couple or three examples of things that don't worry. Be like them, he's saying. And he he makes the point that who of us by worrying can add one little tiny bit to our life? In fact, he doesn't say it. But if we if we worry too much, we may take away some of our life. Now, literally take away some of our lifespan. But we definitely will take away from the quality of our life. So what what does Jesus use as kind of examples? Don't don't worry. Instead, be like what? Do you remember? It's part of part of creation. One of the things that that he talks about are are birds. Says, they don't worry. They don't worry about what they're gonna eat, you know, but God takes care of them. Yes, ravens. God's God cares for them. He birds, he makes sure they have plenty to eat. Birds know how to migrate. When it gets too cold and frozen up north, they come south. That's built into them. Wildflowers, yes. The other thing, he goes, Solomon in all his glory didn't look as beautiful as these wildflowers. And yet they're here today and gone tomorrow. That's that's the way things are with flowers and grass and parts of nature. And so and you know, that's, you know, the you you even going down the freeway sometimes now in different states. Wildflowers are planted in the median. And here's this beautiful purple, and then you come to beautiful yellow. Those flowers didn't get up that morning worrying about what they were gonna wear. It's part of what God blessed them with. And so the point God is making is don't worry. It's not saying don't save, don't work, don't earn. It's saying don't stress over those things. And that can be true in a lot of things when bad stuff happens to us and we have a tendency to worry about it. This is saying it's not saying, don't be concerned, don't go to the doctor, or don't don't do what's prudent, but it's saying instead, don't worry about it. And this is a, it's a hard lesson. We we let things we 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 let things get on our hearts and on our minds until they do detract from our quality of life. He warns about being ready for the master to come home. And he uses this this example of of a servant who's over other servants. And the master's gone away for a while. And so this servant that's in charge takes advantage and starts mistreating the other servants. And he says, be careful. The master will come home someday when you don't expect it. And then that person is in in trouble. And it's just a caution to us to live our lives always expecting Christ to return. Or perhaps he won't return, but we'll we'll pass away. And so we should be ready for that. Not stressing over it, but just living ready. We didn't really get to verses fifty-four and fifty-nine in chapter thirteen, so I'm gonna hit that real quickly. I won't read it, but Jesus says, you know, you people have become really good at looking up at the clouds and saying, oh, man, look, it's going to rain. Or you go out in the morning and you feel the south wind blowing, Jesus says, and that means it's gonna be dry. To the south of them was 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 Egypt and and people, people understood it. That's where the weather is gonna be coming from. We're not gonna get rain for a little while. And then he says, but you haven't learned to, you you have learned the signs about weather, but you're not able to see the signs that I'm I'm here. I'm the son of God. The kingdom of God is at hand and you're not picking up on that. And I think, my goodness, what would Jesus say today? He would say to us, you've got all this technology about weather. You can watch a cold front coming from Canada down through the north and predict your weather very well. Or you can use GPS to know exactly where you are or to figure out how you're gonna get from point A to point B. You've got all this stuff. But sometimes you don't see that I am the Christ, the son of God. We have so much scientific knowledge, but sometimes we miss out on deeper spiritual truths. Okay, let's hit chapter thirteen now. We're gonna crank on through these. I'm gonna read verses one through nine if you wanna follow along with me. And I won't read as well as Becky would have, but hang with me. Now, there were some some present at that time who told Jesus about the Galileans whose blood Pilate had mixed with their sacrifices. Jesus answered, do you think these Galileans were worse sinners than all the other Galileans because they suffered this way? I tell you, no. But unless you repent, you too will all perish. Are those eighteen who died when the tower in Salome fell on them? Do you think they were more guilty than all the others living in Jerusalem? I tell you, no. But unless you repent, you too will perish. Then he told this parable. A man had a fig tree growing in his vineyard, and he went to look for fruit on it, but did not find any. So he said to the man who took care of the vineyard, for three years now, I've been coming to look for fruit on this fig tree and haven't found any. Cut it down. Why should it use up soil? Sir, the man replied, leave it alone for one more year. And I'll dig around it and fertilize it. If it bears fruit next year, fine. If not, then cut it down. Jesus tells parables sometimes and then moves on, and it's up to us to figure out what the point was. This thing about the Galileans, we don't have any facts about that. This story is not recorded in any other book or letter in the Bible, but apparently some people were worshiping up in Galilee, some Jewish people, and Pilate had them murdered. And then there were some people who were killed in what we would think of as a natural disaster. A tower fell on them. And the tendency then well, let's let me ask it this way. Jesus says, do you think they were any worse sinners than the other people? What's the point that he's making? He's making a really important point for us to remember when something bad happens to us. It's it's still is an issue today. Obviously, the people that Jesus was talking with had some theology around bad things happening that Jesus wanted to counter. In other words, he's got an important teaching here. And he's he tells it by saying, you know, the other day some of you were telling me about these people who were worshiping and the the Romans came in and killed them. Do you think they were worse sinners than other people who were worshiping that day? No. And then he says, a tower fell on some people. They had absolutely nothing to do with it. It was an accident. The tower fell on them. Do you think they were worse sinners than other people? Thank you, Greg. Bad things can happen to anyone. The Book of Job was written to teach us that. And yet, when something bad happens to us, the first thing we tend to think about is, what did I do? Why is God doing this to me? Why is God having, making this happen? It oftentimes is, as Lynn says, an opportunity for God to show us something, to lead us through something. I'll tell you a quick story. Becky and I went to Cuba twice on mission trips. And the second time we went, we ran into an interesting situation. We were working at a camp, Canaan, which is like a Methodist camp there. But in the evenings, we would go out and do vacation Bible school at small churches that were located around that camp. And on one Sunday night, I was invited to come and preach at a house church. Now, house churches are like it says, it's a church that meets in a house. But this church had grown and grown, and so it had just a few weeks earlier been declared a local church. In other words, it's gone from being a house church to having a permanently appointed pastor at their church. And they didn't yet have a building, so where they were still meeting in the house. It was incredible that night to see the crowd gathered in. They probably had come primarily to bring their children to vacation Bible school. While we were in worshiping in the living room, Becky and a group of women on the mission team were kind of in the back, not just women, but there were men with them as well, leading the kids in vacation Bible school. It was an unbelievable crowd. The living room where I was preaching was huge, and it was full of people. Out in the yard were people looking through the windows. The windows were all open at the house. And people brought lawn chairs and were sitting out in the lawn. They'd set up a sound system. And I I think part of it may have been, you know, curiosity. This gringo is preaching this guy from America, so let's come and see what it's like. But it was incredible. The music was beautiful that night. And as I preached, I was preaching, of course, in English. And I had a young translator named Orleans. And he was an incredible translator or interpreter. And as I would speak, Orleans would speak in Spanish. And I had chosen to preach on when good things, when I'm sorry, when bad things happen to good people. And this was my point. I used this particular scripture from Luke that night. When I got to Cuba and started working with the people and was invited to preach, I came up with that topic and then I tried to, it's like, no, maybe that's not a good topic. And it was like God wouldn't let me change it. It's like, no, this is what you're supposed to preach on. Go preach it. And so I did. And at the end of that sermon, and I I use several examples of bad things that happened to good people and that God didn't cause those to happen. God cries along with us. And a man came up after the service, and I've always regretted this. Orleans had had moved on and was talking to someone else. And this man came up to me crying. I mean, big tears running down his face. And he was speaking in Spanish, and I couldn't understand a word he was saying. Except every now and then he would say, bless you, bless you. And I was getting that. And that next morning, we got together for breakfast, and the pastor from that church came and had breakfast with us. And he said to me, your message last night was a message from God. And you always want to hear that. And I said, well, thank you. I hope it was. And he goes, no, it was a message from God. He said, earlier this year, something terrible happened in our church. Two of our youth were swimming in a stream and a storm came up, and they didn't get out of the water. And lightning struck that stream and killed one of the boys and hurt the other really badly. And he said, that father, that man that you were, I was talking to you last night, was the boy's father. And he said, he has blamed himself thinking that he's done something wrong and God was punishing him. And he says, the whole church has kind of adopted that feeling, that theology, that when something bad like that happens, God is punishing us. And he said, I've told them, and I've told them that's not true. But to have someone come that they don't know and preach that message to them, he said, that that was something my church needed to hear. Wow. It's so awesome when God uses you like that. I had no idea why God was having me preach that. But this this message is so powerful for us to hear. We we should always listen. We should always be open to God. But God doesn't punish us by making towers fall on us. God is with us in natural disasters. And then he tells us this parable and moves on about this guy who had the fig tree and it wasn't bearing fruit, and he said, cut it down. The gardener offers something. The gardener, what what does the gardener offer? I guess the theological word for it. What is the gardener offering? The guy says, cut that tree down. I've given it three years. It's not bearing fruit. And the gardener says, you know, let let me let me dig around that tree. Let me cultivate it a little better. Let me put some fertilizer on that tree and check back with us next year. And if it's it's not bearing figs, we'll cut it down. What's the theological term for what the gardener is offering here? It's it's like that tree does not deserve another year. Patience, yes. The gardener is offering patience. I'm thinking of just a little bit beyond that, Tommy. He's offering patience, but he's also saying, this tree doesn't deserve it. Give it another chance. That's grace. Patience, giving it another chance. God is a God of grace. Oftentimes, we're not producing fruit. And Jesus is saying, yes, thank you, Christie. And Jesus is saying, I'll give you grace. We we never deserve God's love, but we get it abundantly. In verses ten through seventeen, Jesus is 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 worshiping, and there's a woman there who is bent over and crippled. Jesus, of course, healed her. And that causes resentment. It causes resentment because the religious leaders accuse him of working on the Sabbath. Now, here he is. He's on his way to Jerusalem to give his life on the cross. And he's being accosted by people who take issue with him healing someone crippled because he does it on the Sabbath. A synagogue ruler fusses at the people. It's like, don't come in here expecting to be healed on the Sabbath. Imagine saying on Sunday morning, don't come in here expecting to be healed or for God to act with you on at in this church. I'm gonna pick up at verse eighteen. Then Jesus asked, what is the kingdom of God like? What shall I compare it to? Isn't that interesting, the way he goes, hmm, what should I compare that to? A mustard tree? Yeah, seed, yeah. It's like a mustard seed, which a man took and planted in his garden. It grew and became a tree, and the birds perched in its branches. And again, he asked, what shall I compare the kingdom of God to? It is like yeast that a woman took and mixed into about sixty pounds of flour until it worked all through the dough. Wow. God's kingdom is such a mysterious thing. We say, well, what's that like? And here, Jesus says, well, it's like a mustard seed. What's his point? It's like a mustard seed. Mustard seed is this tiny, tiny little seed. In one of the Gospels, he says, the smallest of the seeds. I can remember as a kid helping my dad plant the garden. And you could take the beans and hold them in your hands and drop the bean seeds. You could take the corn. We oftentimes would plant those together. They're easy to hold and to drop and to see. But then there would be seeds like radish seeds. And oh, my goodness, they were so tiny. You didn't take an individual seed and drop it and reach down into that little packet of seeds. And as you walked along planting them, you just worked your finger and thumb like that and dropped them. Mustard seeds are even tinier than that. And Jesus says, why is he using these seeds? You take these tiny seeds. Yeah, it takes root and it leads to growth. And it becomes a large plant. It's like a huge bush. And he says that birds can perch in it. One Gospel says, so that the birds of the air can perch in it. And that's a slang term for Gentiles. Jesus was saying, the kingdom of God grows. When we plant it, it grows. And when it grows, even Gentiles, Jews, even Gentiles can come into this kingdom. What's it like? It's like yeast that a woman mixes into, my goodness, sixty pounds of flour. That is a lot of dough. And when we mentioned this, he was talking about the yeast of the Pharisees in a bad way. We said, well, yeast spreads. It makes the dough rise. But it spreads. You put it in a, you work it into part of it. It gets into something as large as sixty pounds of dough. If you go to work, you go to school, you go to where you are around people, and you mention kingdom things, it's like that mustard seed. It'll grow. It's like that yeast. It'll move among other people. It has that nature. That's what the kingdom of God is like. Verses twenty-two through thirty, Jesus went through the towns and villages, teaching as he made his way to Jerusalem. Remember, he is on his way to the cross. Someone asked him, Lord, are only a few people gonna be saved? Now, this sounds like somebody who's a little concerned. He said to them, let's see, I'm reading through verse thirty, yeah. Make every effort to enter through the narrow door, because many, I tell you, will try to enter and will not be able to. Once the owner of the house gets up and closes the door, you will stand outside knocking and pleading, sir, open for us. But he will answer, I don't know you or where you come from. Then he will, then you will say, we ate and drank with you, and you taught in our streets. But he will reply, I don't know you or where you come from. Away from me, all you evil doers. There will be weeping there and gnashing of teeth when you see Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob and all the prophets in the kingdom of God, but you yourselves thrown out. People will come from east and west and north and south and will take their places at the feast in the kingdom of God. Indeed, there are those who are last who will be first, and first who will be last. Ooh, that scripture bothers me. What do you suppose is meant by the narrow door? He says, come on, you have to enter the kingdom through the narrow door. Not a lot of people are gonna be coming through that door. What's what's meant by narrow door? Different meaning, but in the while I'm waiting for my sound to get out to you and your comment to get back to me. If you go to the Church of the Nativity in Bethlehem, it's got a little low door. And that door is so low that a horse couldn't, a rider couldn't ride through that on horseback. If a soldier attacking them wanted to get inside, the soldier had to get off his horse and come through, stooped over. It was a defensive measure. But guides always point to that and say, when you enter God's presence, you have to do it on your knees. That's not the narrow door. This is the low door. But it's a, it has good theological meaning that, yeah, when I approach God, I need to bow down. Thank you, Greg says, the only way is through faith in Christ. Jesus is the way, the narrow way, yes. This doesn't mean that we have to earn our way to Christ. We don't. We don't earn it, but it's not easy. We have to kneel. Yes, Tommy, we have to be in prayer. We we have to be committed to have faith in him. Yes. We have to begin with our faith, and that requires us to change our lifestyle oftentimes, to to avoid some things that that aren't of Christ's kingdom. He says, some people there are going to say, we ate and drank with you. You preached on our streets. And Jesus is going to say, I don't even know you people. That's talking about these kind of surface relationships. Yeah, I know Jesus Christ. I've got this little bracelet that says WWJD. What would Jesus do? I've got a little fish on the trunk of my car or on my license plate. And Jesus is saying, sorry, that doesn't cut it. You you didn't have faith. You didn't you didn't accept this gift that I offered to you. There will be weeping and gnashing of teeth. That bothers me. And and those of us who think that will be there, the ones who in his case, he was talking directly to the Jews. But he says, people are gonna come from the north, the south, the east, and the west. But he says, people are going to come from the north, the south, the east, and the west. In other words, from other places and come into the kingdom where you will be left out. And I hear that as saying, be careful in the church because you may have a surface relationship, a shallow relationship. Jesus is looking for deep relationship, people who truly love Him. Let me hit thirty-one through thirty-five real quick, and then we'll get into fourteen. At that time, some Pharisees came to Jesus and said to him, leave this place and go somewhere else. Herod wants to kill you. And as I finish reading, comment on that about, why, why would these Pharisees come and say that? Leave this place and go somewhere else. Herod wants to kill you. He replied, go tell that fox, I will keep on driving out demons and healing people today and tomorrow, and on the third day, I will reach my goal. That's a hint about his crucifixion. In any case, I must press on today and tomorrow and the next day, for surely no prophet can die outside Jerusalem. See, he's, he's subtly telling the crowd, I'm going there to die. And on the third day, I'll rise again. And then Jesus says this, Jerusalem, Jerusalem, you will kill the prophets, you who kill the prophets and stone those sent to you. How often I have longed to gather your children together as a hen gathers her chicks under her wings, and you are not willing. Look, your house is left to you desolate. I tell you, you will not see me again until you say, blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord. There's a, a later place where Jesus draws close. Okay. Thank you, Lynn. They didn't want his word to be spread. Hang on to that. Somebody else make a comment. Why did these Pharisees do say this? There's a later place where Jesus weeps whenever he sees Jerusalem, just before he goes in on his triumphal journey. My phone just rang, and I know what that is. That's somebody wanting to sell me an extended warranty on my car. I bet you get some of those calls too. Okay, so Lynn has said, they don't want his word to spread. She's taking the view that these Pharisees, as they often were, were against him. I don't see any other comments. Some people say, there's going to be trouble. If Jesus keeps teaching this, there's going to be trouble there. And the Romans are going to come and kill him, and we don't want that to happen in our village. Other people say, no, there were some good Pharisees who were concerned about Jesus. And they were saying, move on from here. You're going to be in trouble. We don't want you to get hurt. It's, I tried to figure out which one is right on that, and I couldn't because some commentaries say each way what Lynn has said. Others say, no, these were Pharisees who were concerned about him. This is one of those reasons why I always tell people, read something in your Bible, decide what you believe about it, and then go read the commentary, or then go read the study notes at the bottom of the page. Because different scholars will have different views, and it's okay. We can, we can have different views about things. Jesus loves the Jewish people of Jerusalem. And he is wishing that they had all believed in him, that they had all accepted him as Lord and Savior. He's, he's got such a tender way of saying, I would have gathered you like a mother hen gathers her chickens under her wings. I've, I've seen hens with chickens that were caught out in the rain. And and, and whenever the, it started to rain, the old hen grabbed those chickens, pulled them in, and spread her wings out. Those little chickens were kept dry under her wings. That's the image Jesus is using here. I would have protected you. I would have loved and cared for you if only you had listened to them. In verse, verses one through four in chapter fourteen, again, Pharisees, and here the Pharisees being bad guys, they're upset that you healed somebody on the Sabbath. Jesus says to them, if you had a child or an animal that fell into a well on the Sabbath, would you not get it out? There's a scripture in the Old Testament that says, it's okay to work on the Sabbath if your ox falls in the ditch. And so if we have, if we have something happen, and we need to work on our Sunday, our Sabbath, we'll say, well, the ox was in the ditch. And Jesus is saying, if you, if you have necessity, go ahead and do what you need to do, like healing someone. Don't let the Sabbath be a stumbling block. In Luke fourteen, seven through fourteen, Jesus sees guests picking the seats of honor at a banquet. That is such a huge thing in the East. It is still part of the culture in Chinese, in, I'm sorry, in China. I went there to do business a number of times. And the first thing you do when you walk into the, into the dinner room, the dinner banquet room, is you look to see, where is my name card? That they are, they're careful to place people's names at the place where they think you should sit. The host, their tables are almost always round. And and so the host will sit here. His most honored guest will be to his right. The next honored guest to his left. The third honored guest to the right of the person on the right. The fourth honored guest, fourth ranked guest, will be seated to the left of the person on the left. And around it goes. If you're sitting across the table facing the host, guess what? You're in the least honored seat, and there might be twelve people sitting at the table. The Chinese always wanted to see our business cards. And, and they would look at the, at the title and decide, you know, who's the most important? That is, it was, to me, that was such a reminder, such a an augmentation of this passage that says, be careful. Don't go in and assume the most honored seat because someone may say, I'm sorry, there's somebody here of a higher rank. You go sit down at the lower rank and let this person sit here. How embarrassing that would be. I remembered that scripture when I would go in and, and go to the least honored place and start looking and, and you were just surprised if you found that your card was somewhere of a higher honor. We're not to chase after honor. But Jesus is saying, by all means, don't go assuming that you are to be the most honored because you're likely to be humbled. This is a lesson in humility. He talks about, and I'm not reading all this scripture, but he talks about this person invited a whole bunch of people to a banquet. And everybody made excuses. I want you to tell me what the, the general excuse is. There's a, there's a more general excuse behind each one of them. The guests were supposed to RSVP. And they RSVP'd by saying, I'm sorry, I can't come. One of them said, I can't come because I just bought a field. What's his real excuse? He says, I need to go check out that field. Another person says, I bought a new yoke of oxen, and I need to go work my oxen. I need to go inspect them. Another person says, you know, I just got married. I can't come to your banquet. Well, if you got married on Saturday night, and this is Sunday night, yeah, that's, that's an understandable excuse. But there is a reason beyond each of those. Can you tell me what the reason is for the person who just bought a field? Okay, thank you. Too busy. These people are all too busy. We're being invited into the kingdom, and we're saying, sorry, I got other stuff to do. The person who's just bought a field, oh, that's, this is business. I'm a, I'm a farmer, and I've got this big field. I'm a business person, and my company is merging. It's tax time. We, we use our business reasons for not being in worship or being in our small group or other priorities. Exactly. This person now says, you know, I just bought a team of oxen. He's got a new truck. He's got material things, and boy, I'd much rather be out driving that and enjoying that. I can't be bothered with things of the kingdom. And then the person who's just gotten married, his other priority is his family, personal things. Now, we're not to damage our family or our relationships by our faith, but they're not to take priority over our faith. So you, you've answered correctly. There are other priorities here. People are saying, well, I'm too busy. I can't do that. And that's not historical. That is current. We, all of us have times when we let other priorities crowd out our kingdom life. I've picked two verses out of chapter fourteen to read. I've been paraphrasing these other ones. But I wanted to read a couple of verses before we close tonight. Large crowds were traveling with Jesus. And turning to them, he said, if anyone comes to me and does not hate father and mother, wife and children, brothers and sisters, yes, even their own life, such a person cannot be my disciple. And whoever does not carry their cross and follow me cannot be my disciple. That sounds way too harsh. Sounds way too harsh to be coming from the Jesus that we know and love and do our best to follow. Or something that happens in the Greek language. We have in English, usually, Greek is so much more expressive than English. You know, there's agape love and philo love and eros love. And so when we read that passage, a love is patient, love is kind. It's agape love. It's kind of love that God has for us. Here's a place where the Greek kind of fails us. What Jesus is really saying is, you have to love me more than these others. He really doesn't mean you gotta hate your father. You've got to not love your mother, not love your wife or your husband, not love your child. That's really not at all what he's saying. Certainly, he's not saying you gotta hate yourself. Remember, love your neighbor as yourself. That says, yeah, I love myself, but I love others in the same way. Jesus is saying here, have me as the priority. He's continuing exactly the same thing. Exactly. Jesus needs to be number one. Our, our faith. I can remember being asked in a job interview once, what are your three top priorities in life? And I said, my faith, my family, and my work. And the person asking me the question probably wanted me to say my work first. And I hastened to say, faith, family, work. But I goof up, and I don't always keep them in that order. Sometimes I'll let my work get ahead of number one and number two. That's probably not the right thing to say in an interview, but I was being honest. Jesus is saying here, try to keep those priorities in order. And then he continues on so much of this. It's like one passage just follows on top of another. And then he goes on and says, what if you start to build a tower? Don't you want to know how much it costs? What if you're, you're, you're a leader of an army, and you're about to face another army? Wouldn't you send somebody else out to count and see how many soldiers they have? Yeah, you would want to be prepared. You don't want to walk into something blind. You don't want to start a project without knowing the cost, because he says, you'll be a laughing stock if you get the foundation poured and then discover you don't have enough money to build the rest of the project. This really isn't about construction, and it's certainly not about fighting an army. It's about know the cost. Jesus is not saying, hey, come and follow me. It'll be easy. In the verses that I read earlier, he says, pick up your cross and follow me. All of this is trying to let us know that following Christ has to be a top priority, and it is not easy. It is not. Prosperity preachers on TV make such a huge mistake when they talk about, oh, just follow Christ, and everything will be rosy. Your finances, your health, everything will be wonderful. No. It'll, it should be hard. When we, when we truly follow Jesus Christ, we're often counter-cultural. Taking up our cross, that doesn't mean that, that, that doesn't mean living with a physical ailment. Taking up our cross means we're willing to die for our faith. I struggle with that. Taking up our cross means taking on the most difficult things. As we profess our faith and as we share our faith with others, let's never tell them, this is easy. Just follow Christ, and everything will be rosy. And never, ever in the church, say, would you take on this ministry? It's really easy. There's nothing to it. If we say that, everyone should say, no, then I don't want to do it. Give me a ministry that's tough. Give me a ministry that's going to challenge me. Give me a ministry that makes a difference. And I hope that's what we all do. I am out of scripture, and I am out of time. It is a quarter till. And next week, we will do chapters fifteen and sixteen as Jesus is getting closer and closer to Jerusalem, and we are getting closer and closer to Palm Sunday and Holy Week. God bless each of you. It's been so good to have you on tonight. I always enjoy seeing your names pop up as you come on or, or as you make comments. It's been so good to have you on tonight, and I look forward to seeing you again next Thursday at seven o'clock. God bless.